I would like to call to order the meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, August 21st, 2018. At this time, I would ask you to please join us by bowing your heads in a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Okay, at this time, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and we have Troop 363 here from the Boy Scouts of America to assist us in that. And Ben Leighton of that troop will go ahead and lead us all on the pledge. So if you all could come forward and assemble to my left, your right, and then if you can be on my right or left.
Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
We want to thank you all for being here. You know, scouts are emblematic of all the virtues and characteristics of citizenship that we look for and appreciate you being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like to recognize Wayne Criminger, who is the President of the North Carolina Association of Zoning, who has a special presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm gonna make one little correction. I'm the former. I just sworn in a new president just a few months ago, so I'm fresh off and freshly glad. I'd like to thank the Chairman and the Commissioners for allowing me to speak a few minutes this evening. My name is Wayne Criminger and I'm the former President of the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officials. I was fortunate enough to be the presenter of the Member of the Work to Rebecca Harper at the NCAZO Annual Conference this year in Cherokee. I would like to read the nomination letter written by Jessica Rue, the current President. I'll try to be as quick as I can, but it's an outstanding letter and I really think you'd like to hear it. This is from Jessica Rue for the 2018 Outstanding NCAZO Member of the Year nomination. I would like to nominate Rebecca Harper from Iredell County as the NCAZO Member of the Year. The purpose of this award is to recognize someone who has distinguished themselves through loyalty to the association. I cannot think of anyone else in this professional organization who has done more than Rebecca, although most people probably don't know it. Rebecca plays multiple roles in this organization and none of them are what we would consider glamorous jobs. She fulfills all of them without seeking recognition while flying under the radar. There are a number of gears that must keep grinding to keep this association moving and she has a hand in all of them. Although she has been a board member for the last two years, she has simultaneously maintained her role as chairperson of the Certification Committee. This is a committee with many new volunteers who lack the experience to assume the leadership role at this point in time. Given the situation, Rebecca offered to train the committee and continues to lead this group. Rebecca frequently goes to Chapel Hill to take care of NCAZO business, speak with classes, and administer certification exams. As part of this role, she issues certificates to new graduates and maintains records of their participation and is a liaison between the School of Government and the NCAZO. She educates new members on maintenance criteria and certification expectations and has responsibility of overseeing the certification manual. Almost done, hang with me. There's more. And if that isn't enough, she assumed the role of Membership Coordinator last year. In this role, she oversees the processing of new memberships and the renewals of existing memberships while using sometimes cumbersome software to do so. She also oversees conference registration and credit reporting and the formulation of all the forms in the software. At times, this can be time-consuming, complicated, and quite frankly, not fun. If you have joined the NCAZO, renewed a membership, become certified, registered for a conference, or had a problem with member clicks, you have likely interacted with Rebecca. Her responsibilities generate a high volume of phone calls and emails, oftentimes from individuals needing assistance. To my knowledge, in the history of the association, no individual has ever served on the Board of Directors as a Membership Coordinator and as a Chairperson of the Certification Committee at the same time. For these reasons, I feel Rebecca has earned serious consideration for the NCAZO Member of the Year in regards Jessica F. Rue.
Well, Rebecca?
And I will finish up one thing, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize. I couldn't agree more with Mrs. Rue's letter. I've been in the organization and for 15 years, and administration for at least seven. I can honestly say Rebecca is the most dedicated and hardest-working board member I've ever had the pleasure to work with. She and I have worked closely in the past year on many different organizational projects and problems. No problem was too great or task too difficult for her to overcome. I've emailed and called Rebecca more times than I can remember for advice and help with many different issues. She truly was my go-to person and someone that I could always count on. Iredell County can be very proud of Rebecca's accomplishments and award, and if I may, I'd like to present it to her now.
If you'll please come forward, Rebecca.
Congratulations. We have a lot of professionals on our staffs and departments. They work hard every day, every year to not only provide top-notch service to the citizens of Iredell County, but to improve themselves professionally. One of the hallmarks of a professional is that they belong to a professional organization, a professional association, and give back to the application of profession that they have chosen. And so that's what Rebecca has done in space, obviously a very important player in that organization, and continues to be able to obviously take care of business at home and share that wealth throughout the state of North Carolina. So, thank you for all you do, Rebecca.
One more, one more, one more. Thank you, congratulations. Good job. employees of this county that work hard at their jobs every day and work to improve their ability to provide services and support our county. So, thank you again. Okay, we now move on to Item 6.1, which is an appointment by the Board, Jill Sinclair, who is the Coordinator for the Drug Alcohol Coalition of Iredell, to share with us two proclamations recognizing the International Overdose Awareness Day and National Recovery Month.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have brought with me tonight Sandy Tabor Gray, who is the Chair of the Drug and Alcohol Coalition of Iredell. And before we read these, I would like for her just to say a few words. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and all of you. You know, I've worked beside a lot of you in the community and, you know, our coalition's goal is to bring awareness and education about this important topic of not just overdose, but substance use and alcohol abuse in our community. And I just can't tell you what it means as a mom that has lost a child to this epidemic and these are his children that are here and my husband, what it means to have you recognize this at this level and in our community. So, thank you.
Very much. I know that you've been very involved in the opioid task force and the two meetings that we've conducted. And Iredell County is very much on the leading edge of counties in North Carolina in terms of recognizing the problem and then taking action, concrete steps, to be able to try to educate and also align resources to be able to help people that are hurting and that in need. And we really appreciate your willingness to share and to be as involved as you are in terms of moving this forward because it's probably a generational struggle. So, Tommy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'd just like to say I've had an opportunity to work with both of these ladies and the commitment level that they have is just unbelievable. So many times in today's world, we all go, we make eight, and we put in our forty and we're gone. These girls give and give and give, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, the first proposed proclamation concerns International Overdose Awareness Day, and I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then entertain a motion. Whereas, more than 63,000 Americans died of a drug overdose in 2016, and whereas, in 2016, there were an estimated 1,505 overdose deaths in North Carolina, a rate of 15.5 deaths per 100,000 compared to the national rate of 13.3 deaths per 100,000 persons. And whereas, in Iredell County, the rate that same year was estimated to be 17 deaths per 100,000 residents. And whereas, International Overdose Awareness Day is an annual event held on August 31st to raise awareness about overdose, to remember without stigma those who have met permanent injury or who have lost their lives to overdose, and to provide better support for overdose prevention. And whereas, International Overdose Awareness Day serves to raise overdose awareness and prevention and fight stigma, including acknowledging the grief felt by families and friends. And whereas, the Drug Alcohol Coalition of Iredell serves to spread the message that the tragedy of overdose death is preventable and to empower our community to demand better overdose response. Is there a motion concerning this proclamation? Mr. Chairman, I approve that motion. Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2018, as International Overdose Awareness Day in Iredell County and command its observance to all citizens. Thank you very much. The second proclamation that has been proposed is the National Recovery Month proclamation. And whereas, behavioral health is an essential part of one's health and one's overall wellness, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental health and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas, an estimated one in five adults, or 26,954 residents of Iredell County, are living with a mental health or substance use issue. And whereas, an estimated 56% of adults with mental health or substance use issues, or approximately 15,094 residents of Iredell County, will never receive treatment. And whereas relatives and friends must recognize the signs of a mental health or substance use issue, encourage those to implement preventive measures, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas, mental health and substance use issues affect all communities nationwide, but with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. And whereas, by seeking help, the individuals can embark on a new path toward improved health and overall wellness. And whereas, to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the Drug Alcohol Coalition of Iredell invite all residents of Iredell County to participate in National Recovery Month. At this time, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would recognize the National Recovery Month, and I'd like to ask Ms. Sinclair if she have anything she'd like to add to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowles. We're just, I'm gonna echo what Sandy said, so excited to be here, and we are so incredibly thankful for the Board of Commissioners that are allowing the residents of Iredell County to have these open and honest and heartfelt and oftentimes tough conversations about what's going on in our community and how we can wrap our arms around those that are struggling and how we can level them and serve them better. So, thank you.
Thank you. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as National Recovery Month in Iredell County and call upon the people of Iredell County to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month theme, which is "Join the Voices for Recovery; Invest in Health, Home, Purpose, and Community." Thank you very much for your steadfast devotion to a problem that is hidden from view in many cases, as has been mentioned by those statistics. There are a lot of people and families that are hurting out there, and we do encourage people to avail themselves of the resources that are out there. And there's no stigma attached to it. There's an opioid crisis that's been the result of, you know, fairly loose prescription practices in the past to deal with pain without an understanding of the long-term effects, and that has trapped many, many people. And there's no discriminator as far as age, or sex, or race, or socioeconomic status. You can find folks all over this county and indeed this nation that come from every walk of life, and they're struggling with how they got there and they can use the help to try to find a way forward, and their families need that help. So, keep your ear to the ground about the events that are being conducted, and it's not just one month, it's one shot. We've gotta put a full-court press on this issue year-round, but it's a great way to kick off particularly a school year when we can talk very candidly to our children about the issues involved with drug abuse and substance use.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just interrupt for one minute. So, you mentioned events. There is, on National Overdose Awareness Day, the two high school football games that will be going on in our county, so at Statesville and at Lake Norman, who plays South Iredell that night. Ironically, they will be recognizing national overdose awareness. They will have a 30-second moment of silence and I believe a prayer within the football team, and also be handing out wristbands that have it on it, and we'll have a table there as well at both football games. And then for Recovery Month on September 28th, we'll be having a recovery event for all those either in recovery, families in recovery. It's free, it's for the family, a lot of fun, but there will also be some speakers there sharing their stories. So, we welcome everybody for that as well.
Thank you again. We appreciate you. We'll now move on to administrative matters on Section 8 that were appropriate for the consent agenda, and then take up two items that require a public hearing or a public vote at the 7 o'clock hour. So, Ms. Jones, if you could please summarize those.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I apologize, I actually failed to mention that there is one adjustment to the agenda, which is removal of the attorney-client portion of the closed session. I failed to mention that earlier, but that does need to be removed.
Didn't mention it because I didn't ask. So, appreciate your chiming in.
Under administrative matters, the following items were reviewed in the pre-agenda meeting. A request from the Finance Department to approve a reimbursement resolution to allow the county to reimburse itself for vehicles purchased before the financing has been secured. This is something that in this current fiscal year, we are financing the purchase of all new vehicles, and any that are purchased prior to that, we can go back 60 days retroactive and reclaim that and include that in the financing. A request from EMS to review and approve the updated rescue contracts. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the July refunds and releases. And then a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the minutes from the special meetings on July the 10th and July the 17th, as well as the regular meeting on August the 7th.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now proceed to Item 8.2, which is a request from the Finance Department to approve a resolution for the sale and issuance not to exceed $47 million in general obligation school bonds, Series 2018.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. In 2014, the taxpayers of Iredell County passed a referendum to issue 119,500,000 in general obligation bonds. We have satisfied all of that with the reserve of 47 million. Iredell Statesville is now asking for those bonds to be issued, and they will build two middle schools on the sites of two of our elementary schools, one of them being Third Creek and the other one being Woodland Heights. So, I'm asking for a resolution to be able to issue these bonds.
Are there any questions for Ms. Alford? Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the resolution providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed $47 million general obligation school bond, Series 2018.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion?
Is the 47 million, that'll build both of those schools?
Yes.
Complete.
That's what I had been instructed, that they will.
Okay, thank you.
Depending on the price of steel. We're praying it will.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Howe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Alford.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to Item 8.3, which is a request from the Iredell County Economic Development Commission to approve an amendment to an incentive agreement with Project Deacon. And Mr. Chris Younger is here to tee that up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. Thank you for allowing us to present this before you this evening. On February 20th, 2018, the Board of Commissioners unanimously approved an economic incentive agreement following a public hearing between Iredell County and the company identified as Project Deacon, based on an estimated investment of $52,136,436, with an estimated annual incentive in the amount averaging $156,694 per year for seven years, with such incentive not to exceed a total of $1,096,857, with such additional terms that may be negotiated and approved by the County Manager and the Board of Commissioners. Iredell County Economic Development is asking this Board to consider an amendment to the economic incentive agreement with Project Deacon to include additional terms allowing for discretionary grant in the amount of $60,000 for Project Deacon to address unexpected infrastructure construction costs at the expansion of their existing manufacturing facility located in Mooresville, North Carolina, and to extend the time to execute the agreement by 180 days. At this time, the company remains to be known as Project Deacon until filed a At this time, the company remains to be known as Project Deacon until a final decision has been made by their corporate office. They are a manufacturer, and their plans would be to expand their existing facility by 7,500 square feet, replace two older lines of production with the latest technology of production line machinery and equipment, and update infrastructure of water lines, electrical, and gas to be made also. Project anticipates to create 20 full-time positions and generate $52.1 million in new tax investment. This project would expect to be completed by the end of 2018. On behalf of Iredell County Economic Development, I want to thank you for your consideration of this matter and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Younger? None? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, and I'd also like to state that I think that this plays right with our new economic incentive policies we set in place that gives us some flexibility to help companies that we would love to see expand in Iredell County. And with that, my motion is to approve an amendment to the economic incentive agreement with Project Deacon to include a discretionary grant in the amount of $60,000 to address unexpected infrastructure construction costs at the expansion of their existing manufacturing facility and extend the time to execute the agreement by 180 days. Sorry, I slaughtered that.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. We appreciate it very much, and the company wants to extend their gratitude for your vote in this matter and extending this discretionary grant to them and allowing them to take care of these unexpected costs.
And we want to draw attention to the annual report of the newly formed Iredell Economic Community Development Corporation, which reflects the tremendous amount of success that our economic development team has been able to achieve during the last fiscal year, adding a total of $136 million worth of additional investment in Iredell County with 1,204 new jobs for Iredell County citizens that are good-paying jobs. So, we thank you for your efforts at marketing what we have in this county for businesses and helping us to be competitive when we don't get a lot of love from the state.
Right. You're very welcome. We thank you for being very supportive of all these projects.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that I have seen us have a postcard with our economic development on it, and now we have a booklet, so we're getting a whole lot better, and I appreciate all y'all do for us. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
We'll move on. There are no announcements of any vacancies occurring on boards or commissions this evening. Likewise, there are no appointments to any boards. Is there any unfinished business? Not aware of any. This is a public comment period, being the second meeting of the month. I don't believe anyone has signed up to be heard, so I would inquire of those that are in attendance if anyone does like to be heard. Seeing that there's not, we will move on to Item 13, New Business. We will get an update on Interstate 77 and the toll lane issues from Commissioner McNeely.
Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting with the Department of Transportation Secretary Jim Trogdon this past week, as most have heard either on the news or read in the newspaper. The Department of Transportation is trying to make the situation better with some different options, and they are willing to go and negotiate with the company, Centra, to see if they can change some of the toll lanes into general purpose lanes. I would be remiss to tell you that I was disappointed in some of the things that we hoped that there would be an opportunity possibly for the state to try to go ahead and buy the contract out, and that at this time does not look like will be one of the things that will be negotiated, so we will still be doing business and paying tolls to a Spanish-based company. So, we will have to wait and see what they can accomplish with their negotiations with the company. I feel like they're kind of going in with one arm tied behind their back. And the bad thing I felt too in it is until the contract is negotiated to a better standpoint, if possible, any improvements we would make as far as hardening the shoulder so that in, over crowding times, we could use it as an extra lane, we would have to pay compensation to Centra. So, not only have we paid the expense of hardening the shoulders, but we'd be renting it basically from the company that we're trying to get out of, of not paying toll lanes by riding on those shoulders. So, needless to say, we put forth a lot of effort, and they did hear us, they do understand, but now becomes a tough time of negotiating, and I will wait to see what happens and pray in the meantime. I think that's the biggest help we can do right now because it's not a very good situation still.
Would it be fair to say that left to the normal processes of allocating resources for road development, that any assistance for I-77 out of the normal process would be unlikely, and that this is going to take the legislature having some special appropriation to actually solve this problem?
I feel personally, I feel that is the only way this problem will be solved, is this will be set aside from the normal STI scoring and funding, and it will have to be something done by the legislature specifically for it. And I feel that's very valid, that they could do that, for this is a unique project, and it was actually set in place and developed and designed before the Strategic Transportation Index was set up that scores. So, as I'd said earlier, I feel like we're not looking at a new project, we're looking at a change order on a very poorly-built house. So, and it is one more big change order I meant, but I think that will be our hope, is yes, it will have to come outside of the DOT and the scoring system that we have now. It's not a new project, it's an ongoing project, so it should be able to be changed. We'll see. I'd call your local representatives, not us, but your state local representatives, and I would let them know how you feel about this project. I feel like it's going to be a very expensive tax on the citizens of Iredell County and North Mecklenburg and anybody else that's coming through.
And I would say if any of our citizens have business down east, particularly on the coast or down around Raleigh, that they call the representatives from those areas if you have any kind of dog in the fight in their areas.
Call anybody and call everybody.
Moving on to the county manager's report, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. I handed out a document in our pre-agenda meeting that is the Iredell County State of the County Report. This is a new document that we have created, and it's part of our strategic planning efforts and tying that strategic planning effort back into departmental goals and our budget process. So, this document is on our website. You can find it on our website under Strategic Plan for our citizens to review, and it gives you kind of an updating summary of where we are in obtaining our goals, and some of those are ongoing. They will continue. We may have met that goal, but it's something that we're going to strive to do year after year, so that's denoted in the report. We've also put some other accomplishments that may not have been specifically part of the goals, but do tie back into those goals. So, this is a report that we hope to do at the end of each fiscal year to kind of keep track of where we are in our goal process, how we're doing, and kind of a progress report for us. So, again, this can be seen on our website as well. Also to let you know that the Iredell County Agricultural Fair will begin on Friday, August the 31st, and that will run through Saturday, September the 8th. And finally, just to congratulate Chairman Mallory and the newest addition to his family with the birth of his grandson this past Sunday, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. We've got three down, two to go for this year. We'll see what happens next year. And I do want to recognize and thank the staff and all the departments that worked hard this year to align their efforts more completely with the goals and objectives that have been enunciated and adopted by this board to be able to move us forward. You know, we are really blessed in this county to have departments that, when I tell other commissioners or anybody else in government that at the end of the year, we have departments that turn in unused funds to be applied to the next year wherever, they can't believe it. Because in most governments, you know, if you haven't spent it by the end of the fiscal year, their idea is that they might not get it the next. Well, you know, our departments and our employees take the view of their citizens of Iredell County, their tax dollars are just important to them as they are to all of the citizens of this county, and we really appreciate their quest to be efficient and cost-effective in all that they do and to align their day-to-day activities with what this board sees as the future based on the beliefs that we have in a conservative approach to governing and having our people maintain as much of their hard-earned earnings in their pocket. So, without further ado, we'll move on to at least one item that can be reported out from a closed session relative to property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A5.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an agreement for the purchase of real property from Barham Springs Home for Children to include approximately 27 acres with associated facilities located on Greenwich Lane for the amount of $665,000.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to go on the record that the money that we're going to spend to acquire this property is actually a reallocation of already money budgeted in this past year for Parks and Recreation. We have chose, instead of building off-site office space for the Parks and Recreation, to acquire buildings at Barham Springs that will house our Parks and Recreation Department that's already constructed. And so, that seems to be a win-win, in my opinion. And so, with that being said, I'm glad to see that this motion and this property acquisition has come about.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Motion carries unanimously. One other matter that we discussed in closed session related to personnel pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A6, there is no action item to be reported out for the public this evening. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for the evening.
A motion by Commissioner McNeely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you.